I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Jenkentown Borough Council, April 24th, 2017. Welcome everyone, nice to see a full house. And Mayor Foley, would you do this in flag?
I would like to lead this to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with good love, the liberty of us all.
Vice President Volker, here. Counselor McCaffrey.
Here.
Counselor Connors phoned and said he'd be running a half hour late.
Okay.
Counselor Farrell.
Uh-huh.
Counselor Danmark.
Excuse me.
President Pickler.
Here.
Counselor Licker.
Here.
Counselor Golden.
Here.
Counselor McLong.
Here.
Counselor Young.
Cover.
Counselor Whitney, here. Counselor Sopina.
Here.
Honorable President, have a question.
Thank you very much. I'd like to hear a motion about approval of minutes. Is there a second?
Yes.
Are there any comments or questions? All right, all those in favor of approving minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, now Counselor Volker, would you do the approval of payroll?
I would move that the actual payrolls be on March 30th, and April 13th, in the amount of $157,359.94, and invoices totaling $178,398.98.
Do I hear a second for the approval of payroll and invoices? All right, any questions or comments? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. At this point, I would like to make a public comment that I've prepared this afternoon. I'm really pleased to see so many people coming out, and to see who's interested in what's going on in the community, and we're really happy to have members of the community be in attendance. I want to note the presence of a camera in the back of the room, and I assume that this is being posted live on Facebook.
That's correct.
And so, I just want people to know that, because you are being videotaped, and it's streaming live. And so, I also want to note that we will only take comments from people who are physically present in the room, so we're not taking comments from people who come in from Facebook. I also wanted to say, I've been tracking postings on blogs and Facebooks, and I want to remind us all that civil dialogue is an important part of the democratic process. And the Jenkentown residents and community members are welcome and encouraged to come and stand and ask questions, and give their views on topics at Borough Council meetings, and we welcome that. Council has a full schedule of committee meetings that are more work-type sessions, and citizens are invited to be part of those meetings as well. If you have a question about which committee your topic fits in, you can phone either the manager, or myself, or committee chair, and find out, like if it's unclear to you which topic, which committee you might attend. I wanted to remind the public that we are a group of volunteers. All of us are residents, and there are three from each ward, plus our mayor, and none of us is looking for fame or fortune in doing this work. We're doing, we are performing community service. Oops, sorry about my tone. There's no monetary gain, and in some cases, it actually costs us money to be here, if we have to pay for babysitters, for young children. All thirteen of us are people who have been chosen, or who have been asked to step into this role of leadership, and we all know that when people do step into leadership, they're taking a risk. We're putting ourselves forward, we open ourselves up to criticism, and sometimes we are attacked, not physically, but leaders are often targeted, or slandered, belittled, and other people kind of try to put leaders down. And so, I want to remind us all here tonight that we are doing the best we can for the Borough of Jenkentown. We are looking at the big picture, and we are also paying attention to detail, and that we are not perfect, we do make mistakes, and we are trying as best we can. I think it's important to remember that we are your friends, and your neighbors, and sometimes family, and what we have in common is the welfare of Jenkentown. We have a fiduciary responsibility to hire a Borough manager, which we have done, and the Borough manager runs the day-to-day business, and we are really fortunate to have a manager who is a dedicated professional, who's on-call 24/7, who is sort of a jack-of-all-trades, and a very fine collaborator, and who also wants the best for the Borough. Council doesn't manage the manager, but we monitor and we give the big-picture direction. I also wanted to say a word about right-to-know requests. We've been getting a lot of right-to-know requests, and these requests do take up staff time. They take up the time with the manager, and finance director, and oft, sometimes even our legal staff. So, the Borough incurs costs when we have an inordinate number of them. That is not to say that the Council is interested in keeping things quiet. No, quite the contrary, we want to share information. So, as much as possible, we share on our website, we have documents that are available at the desk, all of us are available by phone and by email to answer questions, and all of us have to disclose, do a financial disclosure form, which we are, you know, welcome to share with people who are interested. I know myself, I have nothing to hide, and I will be happy to share with any resident who wants to see my financial disclosure form. I ask if you just call me, or email me directly. I also want to remind us that the Pennsylvania Municipal Code allows the Borough, when the Borough is dealing with questions that have to do with personnel matters, litigation, or real estate, that sometimes we must have those conversations in executive session, because of privacy issues, and because when we're dealing with real estate, sometimes there are sensitive matters to discuss. So, with all that being said, in a few moments, we will open up the floor to public comment and questions. Before we do that, we have decided to change the Order of Business, because we have a court reporter here, in the interest of saving a little bit of our precious funds, we are going to go into, adjourn this meeting and go into a public hearing, is that, do I have that right?
No, just make a motion to open a public hearing.
So just make a motion, okay. So I move that we go into public hearing. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We will now go into a public hearing, to hear the Order of Business, items number one and two in the Order of Business. I ask Counselor Farrell, I say them both yours.
Well, let me put some things on the record, ma'am. Madam President, the need to put along. Mark is D1, will be a copy of the advertisement of the public hearing. D2 will be a copy of the ordinance. D3 will be the recommendations of both our local planning agency and the county agencies, per the Pennsylvania Municipal's Planning Code, when a municipal government chooses to amend their zoning ordinance, like they are for medical marijuana and wireless communication facilities, it's required that a public hearing be held. There would be a brief explanation, perhaps, from Counsel Farrell, or I can get it, relate to either of these. Then there will be an opportunity for comment from Borough Council, and an opportunity for the public, and then the Council can do a couple of things. They can either close the public hearing, and eventually take action on items number one and two, which are under the Order of Business, or if they had additional questions, continue the public hearing to a later date. Counselor Farrell?
Thank you. I make a motion to approve ordinance number...
No, no, I'm sorry. That is under, I'm sorry, that's not, under the Order of Business, we have one and two. What we need to do is hold a public hearing on these two issues, meaning a brief explanation of each of these, then allow for Borough Council comment, and public comment, then close the public hearing, and then if Council likes, they can vote on one or two.
Thanks for that clarification. Okay, so before us tonight sits two ordinance changes. The first one is regarding allowing a medical marijuana dispensary to exist in Jenkentown. And we did discuss this at least two or three meetings. We consulted with our solicitor, and we decided to move forward based on the fact that we are able to regulate its location and its general process of operation. And we, again, medical marijuana dispensaries are already highly regulated, so we did not have to do that much work in terms of regulating its operation, but we did want to make sure that its location was somewhere in the town that fit a small town. And so, we did determine that putting it in the business district, bumping Old York Road, along with it, following all the other regulations that it was already required to comply with, fit what we felt was appropriate. If anyone else has anything to add to that?
And Counsel Farrell, I just wanted to reiterate, this is passed by General Assembly, per state law, every municipality should provide for this, medical marijuana use. If they don't, they run the risk of having to be put in any zoning district in the Borough. So this is a preemptive strike for us, by saying where we would like this to appear, but we do have to provide for it somewhere in our town.
And I would just like to add that the ordinance provides reasonable measures to control the operation of the dispensaries, such as, in Part D, it says no exterior sales, and no sidewalk displays should be permitted, no drive-through, drop-off, or pickup services, hours of operation, 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. I'm just summarizing with you. No one under the age of 18 should be permitted into the medical marijuana dispensary, et cetera. All of this is available online. So, are there any questions or comments?
I would just like to say, very pleased that you're in front of us. Again, if we didn't specify where this could be, then it could, we could be sued to put it anywhere, and if this, our opinion that having a medical marijuana dispensary, should one appear in the Borough, on York Road, in the commercial or gaming districts, was the appropriate place, than not back in the day. So very pleased with that. And I'll also say that medical marijuana has been proven to be very effective, helping people with chronic illness, and controlling their pain or other symptoms much more safely than opioids, which are leading to addiction and death, terrifying numbers. So I hope we actually get them.
Thank you. Any other questions from citizens? All right.
And I suggest, Counsel Farrell, to pick up the wireless communication facility ordinance, which essentially is, as we know, telecom is a changing industry, we want to regulate our right-of-way, to say where telecom pods, towers, and everything like that appear in Jenkentown, so we were essentially giving the Borough the chance to regulate our right-of-way. And we were tightening it up, because technology is continually changing in the telecom industry. So that would be a brief summary of that ordinance.
Thank you, Sister, continuing. Again, we were mindful of regulating where and how these things are placed in the Borough, because we didn't want them just placed anywhere. So, no further to add, if anyone else is ready?
Just start, yeah, I have it, just the one before.
And I'll just summarize a couple of the clauses in the proposed ordinance, which say that, for example, no tower-based WCF may be located on a building or structure that is listed on either National or Pennsylvania Register of Public places, the lighting is regulated, the appearance is regulated, shall be galvanized or painted with rust-preventative paint, they should not produce noise, and so on. Just a few things.
Counsel Farrell, I would ask for additional comment, public comment, and if you want to close the public hearing.
Are there any comments or questions about the wireless communication facilities? Okay, we're going to close this part of public comment.
So we need a motion to close the public hearing.
And we need a motion to go back into our regular session. Is that right?
Yes, motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing, and go back into our regular session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Okay, so we are now back into our regular Order of Business. So we don't, we don't need our court recorder to...
We don't take action on either of those ordinances.
Okay, great, thank you. Although we love to see you, happy to see you though. The next thing we're gonna have, a little, again, a little out of order, is we have a very brief presentation from our auditors, Barbara Kane Thornton and company. So we shall hear a brief presentation. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming.
Thank you very much. I need a brief summary of our results of the audit this year, and Mike will be giving those out. Mike was the staff on engagement, I was the manager in charge of engagement, so I'll take probably five minutes just to give you a brief results of what our results were this year. So if you, if you turn to page one of the document that you have in front of you, we were out here in February, in March, we were out here for a long week to do the audit. We did data audit for March 27th, 2017. There was one thing I wanted to throw out before I go ahead, was the Borough met the DCED filing deadline for April 1st, so you made a statement, promised to send in a report that was submitted on time, with the help of management. So when we come out here every year, we don't only test controls that you had in place, we look at controls around your major expenditures and revenues. So we look at controls around your expressments, payroll, and revenue. And we do take samples of these transactions during the year, to make sure that you're following the procedures you have in place, without finding major issues within your business areas, which indicates that the job that management is doing. We also did test controls of our expenditures, we pulled a larger sample of your expenditures, and we reviewed the controls in place, we didn't have any major issues over those expenditures. We did have a couple of recommendations from management, that we have provided to management, and those will be implemented within the next year. We did give a modified opinion on the report, which was a clean opinion, we didn't have any significant deficiencies, any internal control issues during the audit this year. So that's a brief, any questions on, that's a brief, so the good thing though is, there wasn't anything major during the audit this year. Classifications were done correctly, revenues were accounted for the way it was supposed to, and this is an ideal audit for us, and when we come in, everything has been done the way it should be done, so I would say congratulations to management for doing that, and Council too, for making sure that things are being done the right way. If you turn to the second page, what I did was, I just did a couple of graphs that compares 2015 and 2016, and just to get an idea of what book years are like. And if you look at the first table, I have major revenues, and if you look, your total revenues for 2016 was $6.29 million, and in 2015 it was $10.1 million. The big difference here is, in 2015, there was bond proceeds of about $3.2 million. That's what makes the big difference between 2015 and 2016.
What proceeds, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you said?
Bond.
Bond proceeds, yes.
So that's, that's a major difference. And if you look at Table 2, your expenditures 2 were about the same, which was a payment of the 2015 bond, so that's, you can see it was trending in the same direction for both years. On Table 2, the only thing I also wanted to point out here was, your public works expenditures was about $1.56 million in 2016, compared to $1.1 million in 2015, and the major expenditure here was, I believe there was major roadwork done in 2016, and that's what basically is causing the increase in expenditures in 2016.
Just to clear something up for people, when you're talking about that difference between revenue, large revenue and large expense in 2015 is essentially refinancing.
Refinancing the bond, basically.
And so, it's not, don't look at it as true revenue or true expense.
No, exactly. Yep, thanks a lot. So Table 3, what I put together was your cash and investment balances for 2015 and 2016. Your cash balances for book years were pretty similar for 2016 and 2015. Okay, so in 2016, you have about $8.1 million, and 2015 was the same. Of this $8.1 million for book years, about $4.9 of the 2016 figure belonged to the pension fund, and $4.7 in 2015 belonged to the pension fund. So about half of your cash and investment balances related to your pension fund. On Table 4, we have a capital expenditures and debt service expenditure detail. So if you look at 2015, your capital expenditures was about $900,000, and 2015 was $302,000. And as I mentioned earlier on, the big difference here is due to the construction, the real construction that went on in 2016. And if you look at your debt service 2, it was about $310,000 in 2016, and $2.9 in the 2015 that relates to the refinancing that was done in 2015. So that's a brief overview of your current year's results. The one recommendation we had this year was that, if you look at your DCED report, you see that you do submit a schedule of expenditures to DCED, capital expenditures to DCED. So we did give a recommendation that the Borough implement a capitalization policy. And what this is, that all your assets that are bought, or your construction, or you have a policy that says that anything over, let's say, $2,000, is considered a capital asset. You know, so then whatever you report to DCED every year would be civilized, and not that, you know, one year you report something that is $500, that just is a capital item, whereas in, let's say, next year you report something that's $2,000, is a capital item. So we give a recommendation that have a policy that kind of like states everything that the Borough would consider as a capital item, and we believe it will make reporting to DCED easier in future years.
Do you have a recommendation for that amount?
Yes, we do have a sample policy that we drew up, and I'll be giving that to, I'll send that to Rick sometime next week, and Council can decide on whatever threshold they want to use for that, for that policy.
Thank you.
And depending, and a lot of boroughs have different amounts, depending on the size.
Right, but that's what I'm interested here, is do you recommend that it be $2,000, or $500, or durable equipment only, or, but you've got that in the center.
Right, we have a sample policy, and any questions that Rick has, he could always reach out, and we can kind of like, go into detail, so that will benefit the Borough. So that's a quick overview of the 2016 audit. Any questions about anything that I said tonight?
Any other questions?
I just had a comment, which is, I want to thank Rick for his thought immensely, for, this is several years in the world, we have opinions, and this is an A report card for these guys. It's immensely appreciated, thank you.
Especially, especially I think you mentioned that this was a year of transition.
Right.
And in our financial stats, so I want to thank both of you, especially for making a smooth transition, and for...
And no, nobody gets to act to it, in a lot of places where it's transitioning to financing, it's always not an easy year having to audit done, and we came in and management was prepared, and we're able to get audits done pretty smoothly, so.
Question, and Rick, you may know this too, when we go out to borrow money, is there like a bond rating attached to our debt? And, or do you deal with that, or know about that, or, I'm curious what our bond rating is, and is it good, or, I assume it is, but...
It should be fine, it's a different group of people, this special bond council.
Right.
And we did get a report showing what our rough borrowing ability, borrowing capacity was, refinanced, delivered, and Michael, I just want to point out, and then, we're very pleased with the reduction in the interest rate we got, and we were nowhere near our borrowing capacity. Doesn't mean I recommend borrow a crazy amount of money, but should some, you know, emergency thing happen, we'd be able to borrow many times what we've already borrowed.
Right. Really important impact of this, the stellar financial standard.
The bonds are not rated, the organization doesn't get a rating, an individual bond would get a rating.
Oh, I see.
And it depends on us, but it also depend on what sort of guarantees were given, so when a municipality borrows, the state can guarantee, or different, different government entities can guarantee those things.
Right.
And then the specifics of what is being borrowed, for, et cetera, all those would go in.
It's more attached to the note than the rating.
And the bond that exists now, I don't know what the rating is.
It's more a bank. Tom, do you want to explain the difference in the borrowing that we do?
Yeah, we don't really go out in the market and issue bonds. We're just doing a bank. So we don't want to do that. A bigger municipality, like several others I represent, they do that, but they're borrowing a lot more money.
I see.
Yeah, they're a much bigger entity.
So it's more analogous.
But it costs quite a lot of money.
It costs a lot of money to do a body.
Several hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So unless you're borrowing $10 million or something, that's a huge chunk of it, and so you don't, you just borrow it from the bank. But we could, I mean, if we decided to do some huge thing, you know, decided to, I don't know, put, or grow it underground through town center.
Second.
We'd need a bond for that.
Sorry for the digression.
We have one more question, Michael.
We'd also need an examination if you thought of it. Two quick things, one, as Rick was talking about, our refinancing, the bad news is how it looks on the charts, the good news is, we're saving something like $25,000 a year because we got, before interest rates moved up, so we got good there.
Over, you know, years and years, that ends up.
Yeah. And the other piece of that is, and it also means that we're paying it down faster, the same principle. The second thing is, it says a lot about the previous auditors as well, that we're getting good work, because one of the reasons you change auditors on a regular basis is to have somebody else come in and make sure of things. And so the fact that there's very little to recommend, and very few changes, means that we've been getting good audit service for the last six years.
That's good to know, thank you for that. And I want to thank you both for your thorough review, and for your recommendations.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out.
All right. Have a good night.
Great. Thank you.
Appreciate it. I appreciate you guys.
Okay.
See you.
Turning now to our agenda, I would like to open the floor for public comment and questions. Anyone who would like to stand and make some comment or question.
Yes. Lori Durkin, 2012, Rodney Avenue. This last month, I came and made a request about a blast email functionality being used to let the community know about upcoming council meetings, and committee meetings, and key items on the agenda, and state, that hasn't happened yet, and to follow up with your introductory comments, I'd like to reiterate that request. I think it's a great way to have more light on what the topics are, and promote community engagement, and so I'd like to reiterate that request.
Thank you, and I'll just comment on that.
Thank you. And I'll just comment on that. We've had an item that we thought was really important that we let the community know on tonight's agenda, and that is consideration of advertising for request information. And so we did put that on the landing page of the website. At the moment, I, I have felt like I'm not sure that we have the staffing to put all of our agenda on, you know, to do, to keep doing a blast of all of our agenda. So we will go back to that at our Admin and Finance and see if we want to make that a priority of stamp, to put all the agenda on a blast. I think what we did this time around was we did a blast that said, "Go to the Borough website and you can read about what's coming up on our company." We didn't do a blast, we just put it on the website.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's a work in progress, but we thank you for your suggestion. And, and we will keep trying to figure out how that fits into the workloads.
Yeah, there was quite a bit of discussion and debate on how to do that. So if anyone else has opinions on it, we'd love to hear it, because what we're trying to do is gather information out in a transparent fashion. So please, you know, tonight, some other time, let us know. But people on Facebook, let us know what you think.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a question. Dave Downs, 301, under me. Can, I didn't make the last month meeting, but can anybody give me an update on the the house that's on the 100 block of Walnut Street that was a major problem? Do you know what that's, what's going on with that right now? The last we heard it was the guy has worn out for his arrest.
I will, you're kind of about 108.
I don't know the exact, 100 something.
Okay, okay.
I just want to figure out what the update is on that.
Yeah, Manager Lot, Community Affairs, on what has been done.
Yes, Madam President, the house is going through a sale. They filed for their certification. And the new owner came in and discussed the demo permits that he's going to run, and the list of violations that we have. The owner that had their search warrant, not search warrant, warrant for their arrest, came in, satisfied all the bills with the borough, and then went to the court and satisfied their tickets there.
Okay, and I'll just follow up with a few questions of my own. So there was a considerable concern about animals getting through from the one side of the building to the other side of the building, and also about any kind of, I don't know, toxic fumes or mold that might be getting through from one side to the other. Do you know the speed with which that is being addressed?
Yes, we, we expect him to be back in this week to do a pre-construction meeting with us. So hopefully by the end of this week, we'll know when he's going to start his actual work.
Okay, so we don't have a timeframe on that just yet?
That is correct.
Okay. And is there any way that we can speed that work up, or encourage him to move quickly?
He understands how long it's divided and the reasoning for it. He's been in the house, so he sees the condition of it.
Okay. I'm just concerned about the owners or the residents on the other side. Yes.
So George, all the, any holes in the roofs or anything like that that was allowing animals to get in, that's been corrected?
No, it has not been corrected.
It has not been corrected, no. Okay. So when that owner comes in, can we ask them to get on that ASAP?
Yeah, we explained to him everything that means we've done a moment renovation, making the structure safe and sound. He seems up for it. He seems to understand. And without doubt, he came back and met with us. Doesn't think that's going to be much of a problem. We were surprised when he came back.
I'm sure we'll follow up.
We're surprised when he came back.
And will you set a timeframe with him for that?
Yeah, once he takes possession of the house, absolutely.
Okay.
Do we know when he's taken possession of the house?
Yeah.
No doubt, I don't know.
Yeah.
It's all for a month, six months, a year? I mean, how long, I don't know how long it'll take for something like that to happen. Does anybody know? I don't know, just asking the question. It can't be the first time it's ever happened.
It depends on the, it's a real estate transaction, so there's lots of factors that come in there. All right, well, thank you for that update. Are there any other questions or comments? Yes.
Kiggy Downs, 301, under me. Just wanted to follow up to say that, I, I wanted to ask for Council two, Mr. Special, Mr. Locke, and Mr. Cook, honey. I'll be meeting with Mr. Locke after this meeting, but the zoning citation with regard to 303 Rennomee remains pending, and the corresponding fine to go with that. Business has...
The corresponding, I'm sorry.
Fine.
Fine.
Fine, thank you.
In Judge McHugh's office. The business has picked up again, as it's spring. So I'm just wondering what the borough's plan of action is. And like I said, I'll be meeting with George this afternoon. In fact, George sent me an email last night saying the owners had called him yesterday to say that they were bringing some wood and equipment off-site, and they just wanted to bring that to his attention. But publicly, I just want to say, we were advised that all of that had been, and George was advised, that that had all been removed. So, you know, George, George, I sent an email saying I just wanted to let you know. And sure enough, like there were a couple days last weekend, again this morning, where they were removing stuff, loading it into a truck, the boards and the wheelbarrows and other stuff. So the public comment is, again, the business is up and running again. And now the meeting with George, hopefully this evening or sometime, is to determine what action the borough is going to take to, again, kind of plant down on this as quickly as possible and follow up with Judge McHugh. To, because her recommendation, we are to go back to them as quickly as possible, as quickly as the business picked up again.
Manager Lot, off, off the top of your head, do you, have you, do you have any response to the question of what action the borough can take to keep monitoring this situation and following up with Judge McHugh?
Well, we made two, two sudden visits today to the fellow's house, and we haven't had any complaints. When a complaint comes in, we'll investigate it, or if we see something that indicates a business is being run ahead of our site inspection, we'll adjust.
Okay. And so the removal of stuff from the property is not necessarily indication that a business is being run?
That is correct. Everybody can remove stuff from your property.
Okay. And what, what would be the, can you repeat what the indicators of a business would be?
I don't have the zoning code in front of me. I would quote out of it. I would quote out of it, but basically what the bottom line and the description is, is that activity that exceeds what you would see out of residential dwelling.
Okay.
No customers, no employees. We'll talk about movies, vibration.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Ms. Downs, for your question and comment. And I, I just want to say that we do have a big agenda tonight. Hopefully we can keep the meeting short. All right. Moving ahead to committee reports, let's hear from Admin Finance, Dr. Parker.
Madam President, a number of things are fairly interesting. Your gov website is hearing with inflation. Do we know a date, when will they actually publish it?
They don't. We will present to you A and F next, you know, next meeting.
We'll see a demo the next day, and then we'll...
We should be prepared shortly after the [inaudible].
This is a system that loads all the financials for the borough, going back several years, and allows the public to slice and dice and investigate and see every single line item categorized and compared year to year, et cetera, et cetera.
And compare to other municipalities.
Exactly. Thank you. And compare to other municipalities, so you can see where we spend more or less or differently than other municipalities. So I'm very excited about getting it up and running. There are a number of grants that are taking place to repair sewers, including handicap ramps on the sidewalks, et cetera. The audit we already heard about, which was very good news. And lastly, we opened up the conversation about moving the night of the Admin and Finance and BZNR meetings, so that they wouldn't conflict with school board meetings in the interest of allowing perhaps some of us to attend school board meetings, or vice versa. Because having us always be at the same high inhibits cross-hawk communications.
So we decided that we will meet on the, which Wednesday?
I think we didn't decide yet.
We, we decided that we would not do it until either September or January, so that there's enough public notice.
Correct. So we're not going to change it until, I thought we were shooting for September.
I hate September. I'm leaving it for third Wednesday of the month.
Third, but I don't think it's, I think, but actually I think we'll have further discussion.
Okay, okay.
That's it for me?
All right.
I think, so I'm going to have another one for the business.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Building zoning and legal innovation, Council Federal.
A number of the minutes are in your Dropbox. A large portion of the meeting was discussion of the, the proposed RFI, and how to best move forward on communicating that, that plan and that process. So that you will see on the agenda, along with a number of other BZNR items. Rather than we cash them all, I'll take any questions regarding anything. One thing I will highlight is I'm eager to hear the awards for the 2040 implementation grant are coming up next week, I think, correct? March 7th. And we did submit a grant for the Southern Gateway. And I'm very eager to, hopefully, receive some good news on that end next week. So we're very hopeful with that.
And I'll just highlight that we do have a couple of items on the order of business for advertising, because we are, we keep thinking about those gateway areas. So we are proposing some changes to our zoning.
Yeah, so I was going to talk a little bit more about that when that came up. However, I can, I can mention that one of the orders of business tonight is changing changing our car storage and surface parking ordinance, so that we can, again, somewhat proactively think about protecting our northern gateway for a similar gateway entrance into the borough. Currently, it is open to all sorts of development. So redevelopment, we think, is in the best interest of Jenkin Town.
Great, thank you. Next up is the public, is public safety.
Yes.
Director Witten.
We have wide on the agenda tonight. We are, because this is a rather early referral council meeting, we need something we're doing after the council meeting, like we're having the fire commission meeting Wednesday. And we're also interviewing the part-time fire marshal folks on Thursday. And this is the 24th, which is one of the earliest referral councils, I recall. So therefore, we end up doing that. Also, you know, minutes are in your Dropbox. I want to entertain any questions.
Any questions or comments? We'll hold off and wait till Council Connor comes in. If he's going to report on public works. Jenkin Town School District, Council of God, Michael.
I'm not following up for it. I do want everyone to know that we're working harder to improve our quality of communication in this whole district. And so George and I will be back to that tomorrow afternoon to look about some suggestions for how we can better do that. And I'll be sure to tell her that we're looking into, we'll do the date of the meeting. So she knows about some of the [inaudible] stuff and that direction.
Good. Jenkin Town, thank you. Any questions or comments? Jenkin Town Community Alliance, Dr. Witten.
JCA had a very productive meeting earlier in the month. They have identified a chairperson to lead the Arts Fest this year. It was a need. And we had a lot of discussions about who would be taking on various responsibilities. And things are progressing, progressing well, I think. And they're still very open to folks who are interested in volunteering to step up and, and help out with it. But as a note, the Arts Fest is, is on for September, I don't have the date in front of me. But I have the date in December, it's Sunday. And, and it will be downsized a little bit, but it will go on as planned.
Who's the, who's she?
Beth Pusquale, who had some, who had apparently, prior to my involvement, and had led the, the efforts with the Arts Fest before. So she's well aware of how to do it, and they're very happy to put that on board.
Who's the leadership of the JCA? Is it the same person?
So yes, Melissa, Phil Park, [inaudible] is still the president. And the leadership is still basically the way it was, but we're really looking for some, some new leadership, additional leadership to help with the, the heavy, you know, carry of the Arts Fest.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
All right. I see here it's announced September 17th.
Thank you.
Sure.
I have, I have, but anyone say it's [inaudible]. Sorry, it's the 17th.
Yeah. Okay, great. All right, and I've just gotten word that Council Connor's is not coming, so the Public Works notes from the meeting minutes, and the meeting minutes are in our Dropbox. And maybe we could combine that with a Public Works Department report. Mr. Wiggins, would you tell us a few highlights of, from Public Works?
Sure. Public Works this month, one of our, one of our part-time workers, he's going along, he's trained real hard, he's got a CDM. So we like to offer him a full competition to grow.
Uh huh.
Other than that, we sent one of our former laborers, now driver, Mark Pedoni, down to Waco, Texas, for training with the temple sweeper. It was a two-day training. They teach you all about the sweeper, how to operate, how to maintain, sit, tricks of the trade. It's just guys down here in Waco, it's just gotta get run sweepers all day. We don't do it all day, but it's one of the big things in spring, some of us. And Mark took in all that and came back, seemed like he learned a lot. Other than that, we have a smooth flow, using about sixty-seven times a sock, thirty-two hundred gallons of brand. Other than that, I'd be open to answer any questions.
Okay.
For Public Works, though, we did get a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, which is probably...
All right.
Do you mind if I can work it out? That's a good thing. Thank you. Thank you. And that was a sanitary sewer PA small water grant.
I was going to mention.
You're going to mention that, sorry.
I'm surprised.
Okay. And I see here that it's a 15% match. So, and do you know that would be specifically for which streets?
I don't know exactly what streets it's for.
We have to evaluate. We, we submitted for 450,000, 437,000, actually. So we're going to have to pare it down. We're going to take the two drainage bases that are experiencing overflow. They're barely experiencing overflow, but a couple times a quarter they'll exceed the limit. Be a [inaudible] from [inaudible] Cedar, Matt area.
I was wondering too, if you would just comment, Manager Lot, a little bit about the shared paving with Abington and the projects that have been happening. There's a lot of street disruption right now. Could you talk a little bit about what's going on and what would be done to repair the streets?
Certainly. The excavations on the streets are complete to install new gas mains. And they are on several streets. They're on Cedar, Allen, Hillside, Natom, Shoemaker. And last week, they started [inaudible]. They also will be... They also will be doing Clement, Ridle, and Vern. Now, there's segments of those roads, they aren't the entire road. We're pushing for Lindavista and Robben to get done as soon as they can. They told us last week that starting this week, they were going to have two crews on it for as long as they could afford to, and then they'll go back to one. Right now, they're looking at being done the first week of September. We like to pave it in August before people relax to school, but you can pave up until October 15th. But they know that we would very much hope to get it paved in August. So this is the latest dates that they'll be done, and they're hopeful. They have to do this at an extended period here in the house for weather and current conditions.
And will they, is this the case where they'll pave half the road and we pave half the road?
That is correct. On almost all of these streets, they haven't been paved. Well, Hillside, they'll have to pave curb to curb. That was done last year. Elm, we'll have to pave curb to curb. These other ones, they'll be paying, paying for half of the road to be paved. They do the trench restoration, and then they look at what would cost us to do it and what it would cost people to do it, and whatever's the least, they will give us fifty percent of that cost. So Lindavista and Robben, we had already prepared to pave that because they were running the gas mains down, and they were going to give us fifty percent of that cost. They're holding off for a year. They'll pay for half of that period. And the joint paving with Abington are roads that we split, usually down the middle, but they're also, the borders are jagged. When you, like Ridle, we own both sides of that to Clement, and then we own half of the road to New Bold. So they're offering to pave that, and they only charge for material and milling machine. They don't charge us for labor, so it's a really reduced rate. And after they proposed that to us, we found out that Pico is going to go down Ridle. So Pico will pay for half of that reduced rate. The other road that they, we don't have to pave is Clove. Pico is going down their side, Abington's side of Clove, and they haven't disturbed our side. So it's, you can't recommend they'll pay it again or not, because until they're done the work, they've done all their services, they may, might end up tearing ours side up. Also, and that might come in that we say we should pave this our half, our out, especially for having Pico pay for half of it.
All right, thank you very much.
Yes, just wanted to back up a little bit to public safety. I was remiss in not acknowledging the new school crossing flashers that were put in our lawn over the month. They were long awaited. I want to thank George very much for the follow-up. George really pursued that TAC grant to make those school crossing lights viable and available to us. And he worked hard to keep that project on, on time as much as humanly possible. So it was a long process, but they're up and they are unmissable now. So I've received a lot of public feedback and appreciation of those, those lights. And, you know, I don't know if the chief has, has noted significant slowing of the traffic, but I know when I'm walking there during the school times, I do feel like folks are observing now that the school zone...
A lot of people listen to the sign.
Exactly.
I saw something I've never seen before, someone turning right out of the school, right onto the street and staying at fifteen miles an hour.
Yeah, they're working. Imagine that. So that was great. And we're very happy to have them. So, thank you for everybody who worked hard on that project.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Multi-municipal group, Council Golden.
No report tonight except to tell people, anyone who's worried, the Eagles are away on the, on September 17th.
Thank you. Okay, we just had our Public Works Partners' report. Engineering, do you have anything more to add?
Those were some of the highlights. Our report is in your, your information packets. We're reviewing the small water grant highlight, the school flashes are activated. We included some funding for the mid-block crossing of Florence in one of the grant applications that just went in. So we're going to look after that.
Madam President?
Yes.
I don't know if you know, this is Mark Pedon. He works with, he's with Pennone, he's our traffic engineer, sitting in for Cal. My old Cal city is gone, it's something fun.
He's out in Massachusetts.
Oh, that's right. He's at the San Martin State Hospital. It sounded like fun.
Sure, he's working very hard right now.
Mark has been very responsive. He's been helping us with the traffic light at Walnut and Ronanee, the signage that went in along Walnut. He went and met with the residents who were unhappy about the new signs. And he's been very responsive and helpful. I just wanted to introduce him to you.
Thank you. Does that mean that Earl's gone, or you?
No.
Okay. I love Earl. I'm sure I'll very love you.
He knows an advocate, so if you're going to...
I have a question for either one of you guys. Is the mid-block crossing at Summit and 611 still happening?
They installed it. Pendot installed it.
Oh, they did?
Yeah.
And there's lights there?
Not yet.
Okay, when is that happening?
We have to talk to Fran Amy, who's in charge of Pendot, who installed it.
Okay. But the striping is there and the...
No, the two handicap ramps were installed.
Okay. So the striping and the lights will come in the summer, you think, or?
I would expect them to go up right away.
Yeah.
But I would jump in.
Okay.
We have an opportunity to do a ramp on our side of Summit at almost fifty percent savings of local cost. So that's something we're going to have to consider. They're coming back to town, they have to do homestead. They named three streets this morning that are near a train station.
Okay.
So they're coming back up this way so we'll have an opportunity. It's about eighteen thousand dollars under the Pendot contract, and they're willing to do it for ten thousand, three hundred. So it might be something. I was just afraid, I spoke to committee about it, and they all thought it was a good idea when talked about it. Until we know Pendot's going with the crosswalk and the lights, I don't know if they want to jump in that situation.
Yeah.
Okay, it's something to watch.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes. Walnut looks great, the signs. I thought we had also talked about maybe pulling out that twenty-five mile per hour sign. Did it come out? Okay, great, thanks. And I just wondered if you could tell, remind me again the rationale for having mid-block crossing on Florence?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, we went with, we went out there to review and the feedback we received was there's quite a, quite a number of school children that cross, see that use the playground to go to and from the school. And it's greater than three hundred feet from the crossings, from the areas of crossings. And the children, you know, the kids are starting, going up to the next block.
They're not going to the stuff, so... No, they all cross in the middle. And also, there's a opening kind of in the, in the fence with steps leading up to it. And so that's kind of the main entry rate for all the kids that are coming from Beaver Hill. And there's so many kids that cross alone, that don't cross with parents. And it's, with all the cars parked there, there's no visibility. The kids can't even see, look in the street until they're actually in the street. And it's just not at all safe. It's not safe.
And it's also not only Beaver Hill, but also Greenwood Terrace.
Yes.
So while the kids come up Greenwood Avenue and get left on Florence and then cross over to the playground to go into the back entrance.
And is it far enough away from the lines?
That was something we looked at very carefully while we were out there. So it became such a very good location that has good site distance.
And the crosswalk itself is a little bit, a little bit kind of bumped out, the one that, that works. And so there's better visibility with the pervert that's kind of being bumped out.
And because on the, on the school side, it's fair, it's a little bit hunk out, sort of like going west. And it allows it to come out for safety, and that's where the ramp is. That way, you only lose three parking spaces on Florence. If you just had a crosswalk for the, for the visual, you had, we would use eight spots.
Wow.
So the bump out's a little more expensive, but it's much more safer in your five of those spots.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Solicitors' report, can you have anything?
Thank you very much, Madam President. This past month, we've worked with staff on finalizing the medical marijuana ordinance as Agenda item number one. Agenda item number two, the wireless communications ordinance, as well as Agenda item number six, residential use not perceived permit ordinance. As well as working with staff on responding to belligerent right-to-know requests. Also too, I know I had emailed you and Councilor Bunker before the meeting, and it's up to Council if they want to. We did have, several months ago, Council had expressed a desire to look into both their existing tax collection as well as their audit program under the Taxpayer Bill of Rights. We have a, a document that is ready with final review of the manager and solicitor to go out for advertising. It's, I know it's not on the agenda, but if Council wanted to take that under new business, they could do so and make a motion just so we can get moving on the process. And of course, because it's not on the agenda, you'd have to open that portion up to additional public comment if anyone from the ordinance wants to. And that concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you very much. And can I just ask a clarifying question? Was that ordinance that you were talking about for both collection and auditing?
The RFQ was checked.
Okay. Because I didn't see the collection part of it. Okay. I will reiterate.
Dan Sessba.
Thank you very much. Mayor's report.
Yeah, no formal report, Madam President. But I will say that, that the Rec Board's Easter egg or egg hunt event that we had at the playground, I did set up some focus groups with some of the kids and got a lot of nice opinions and feedback about the Cedar Creek Park and what they would like to see and some surprises. And I'll, I'll write that up, and I don't know the next time they could meet and we can talk through that stuff.
We're going to use the next EAC meeting, which is May maybe fifteenth or something?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I'll bring that down.
Seventeenth, May seventeenth, for that purpose. So it would be great if you could bring that information.
Sure. Other than that, I have nothing to add to report.
Okay. Good. Chief D. Valentino.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a few comments. First of all, my reports are in your, in your Dropbox. And I want to remind the residents that on Saturday, the 29th of April, we're having our Drug Take-Back Day. So if anybody has any unused or expired medication, bring them up, and an officer will, will be here to collect them. And this is in conjunction with the District Attorney's Office and the Police Chiefs Association. Carrywide. Ordinarily, we have a Dropbox in our lobby that people can drop them off at any time, but this is a cooperation, cooperative effort with the county on Saturday, the 29th.
Great.
And I'm going to put it on Facebook, too, just to remind folks as well.
Thank you. We were sorry to hear about the loss of Rocky.
I was going to say, we appreciate the comments, the very kind comments from the board, from the residents about Rocky. We really appreciate that. He was well received with the community when he first arrived. And he served well, and, but he was ill, so we appreciate all the, all the kind comments from the residents.
And how is Rocky Two doing?
They're doing, they're doing well.
I know that's not his name.
There's two.
That's right. Oh, that's kind of a surprise.
No, they're doing well. They're, they're doing well.
Okay.
They're not Rocky, but they're doing well. And one more thing, we, an inspection from the Pennsylvania State Police and the Drug Enforcement Agency to the police station is imminent. We don't know when the inspection will be, but it'll be in the very, very near future. They just won't tell us the date. They'll, they'll show up and they'll do their inspection. Regardless of that, we're prepared for them, and we're looking forward to their visit.
All right. Any questions or comments? Thank you. Manager Locke, do you have anything you'd like to tell us from your report?
Yes, Madam Kennedy, I would like to hit a couple things. Most of everything in my report, which is in your Dropbox, has been passed on by somebody.
Okay.
The Abington consortium at the end of the lighting is off to a good start. They committed, they fixed four lights that have been broken and unable to be fixed for quite some time. They also addressed the residents' concern that Greenwood and Walnut, whose, their whole house was illuminated by the LED light. And it was as simple as installing what they call a shade on the back of it. It's really all they did. And they did all that in a half a decade. So even under twenty-seven dollars an hour less, they were pretty quick. It will happen in a decade. Mr. Ware and I met with the LED consu, procurement project, the VRPC is handled at, we met with Johnson Controls. That has actually begun. The majority of the decorative lights have been replaced with LED. And they're talking about Med coming in and installing our coverheads. We're next in line. As soon as they come in, we'll be in here. It's actually a local contractor, one that did the installments, Armor and Sons. So we're familiar with them, and they're familiar with the borough. Jim has been working with them. All the gates that we talked about, the construction, I already explained that. Zoning use, we did issue one for the Shamri Creek Brewery. We issued a zoning use to a business called Pitt Tribes. It's going in 205 York. Hot York is expanding into the second store next to where they work. We increased business. And next month, we will, before council, will come a conditional use hearing from Mid Door Properties. They acquired the Saks building, they want to be commercial on the first two floors and put apartments up stairs on the third floor. It's four apartments. Our code states that if you want to be free, it's an apartment house and needs a conditional use hearing. So that'll go through planning commission, BZNR, and it'll finally come through you guys at the end of the month, but also get an account for them to look at the application.
Great.
I think every one of us has been hit on. Are there any questions I'd be pleased to ask?
Any questions, Madam President? Okay. Thank you very much. Let's turn now to the order of business. Ordinance number one, Council of Federal.
Okay.
And two.
All right, so after public hearing, we can now move on these ordinances and make a motion to approve ordinance number 2017-1 pertaining to the Medical Marijuana Act.
All right. Any comp, questions or concerns? Comments? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Item number two.
Item number two, I make a motion to approve ordinance number 2017-2 pertaining to wireless communications facilities.
Okay. All right. Are there any questions or comments? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Item three, Council Whitney.
Ordinance 2017-3, Borough Code revision for accreditation standards is for police. Motion, I make a motion to approve ordinance number 2017-3, which contains the required language to match the Borough Code and the accreditation standards.
Okay. And any questions or comments? I believe that these are accreditation standards for the...
Please.
Okay. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Item number four, Council Perry.
I make a motion to advertise ordinance number 2017-4 pertaining to the zoning of the car storage slash surface parking lot.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Any comp, questions or comments? And again, this is just your advertising, a proposal, and this is to modify our zoning code.
So this isn't about a specific parking lot? This is...
This is modifying our code.
It's really like the V where they shouldn't have...
It also defines the term car storage, which we discovered we didn't, we hadn't defined in our code. And our goal is to limit the places that car storage can be, can happen around the borough.
Would this, if this ordinance is approved, would this apply to the property in Washington Lane?
That is a good question. I can't remember the answer to that. We did discuss it.
It applies to the gateway, that is in...
That would allow car stores there.
No, would not allow car stores.
No, would not allow us there because...
Besides it a lot.
Okay.
Okay. Because under conditional use, which is a, a class one, which says that a lot has to be forty thousand square feet, that's already in the code. This is just an additional, conditional use for, for ones that you need from the council. And to have this one, your lot has to be forty thousand square feet.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Item five.
I move to advertise the RFI, Request for Information, for the concept sale and development of borough-owned properties on Summit Avenue.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments?
So as we wrote in, on our website, this is, our intention with this is to advertise and seek information from anyone who might be interested in developing the parcels of property that are owned by the borough right here on Summit Avenue. Our intention, if I can just find this, wait a second, is to permit development. At the moment, this property, because it's owned by a borough council, does not engender taxes. And it does seem to us that it might be used in a way that would be more beneficial and bring in more tax revenue for the borough. So we've also been approached by a developer who's interested and that led us to believe that we should have an open and transparent process. So we are putting this RFI out so that we might hear from other people and see what the highest and best use might be. We're interested in having mixed-use development. We think that some kind of residential would be appropriate, but we are also concerned about reducing and minimizing the impact on the school. We don't, because we're very sensitive to the fact that our school is quite crowded. I see your hand and I'll call you on you in a minute. And we also are really interested in making sure that there's public parking that is in excess of the amount of parking that might be needed for, for any kind of destruction. And we also, of course, want to generate foot traffic for the already existing businesses and commercial endeavors that are happening in the borough. So those are some of the objectives that we've talked about and also that are articulated in our Janketown twenty thirty-five plan that has, is being, in the process of being adopted. And that has been developed by the Montgomery County Planning Commission. Mr. Golden?
One of the key issues here is that we were approached by a developer and this council did not want to react to things. What it wanted to do is find the most optimal opportunities and then decide, A, whether or not to do it at all and B, what it would mean, what's the best one. And so the one place to look is in our section on requirements for the redevelopment plan. I'm just gonna read this because something we're doing that's unique is we're not saying, build us a hotel or build us residential or build us commercial. We're saying, you figure out what you can build that's gonna best meet our requirements. And the things that we're hoping to maximize are substantial tax revenues, particularly for Janketown School District, public parking availability beyond the needs of the project only, design, massing materials and other aspects in line with borough design efforts, generate foot traffic for borough retail, meet housing and/or other needs of the borough, limited impact upon school population, willingness to share information with the public as part of the process, and then pretty much anything else that, that makes sense as we go along and learn more.
Thank you for reiterating what I just said. All right. So we have a motion on the floor and a second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Thank you. All right. Item number six, Council Carol.
I make a motion to advertise ordinance number twenty seventeen dash five pertaining to the creation of a use and occupancy inspection for residential resales.
Sure.
All right. And can you just talk a little bit about this, what this ordinance might be come for?
So this, their ordinance calls for added language to, to the health and safety of borough homeowners. And it requires, in Chapter one fifty-six of the ordinance, it requires sewer lateral inspections and requires repairs if defects are found before homes are changed hands, homeowners. A new homeowner buys a property, they'll have the knowledge of whether or not there are any sewer lateral defects. So we feel that that was beneficial for a few reasons. One, it's in the best interest of potential buyers to know the condition of that aspect of their home prior to purchase. It provides for any potential negative environmental impact if there is in fact a defect. And it also demonstrates the borough's effort to provide the deregulation regarding sewer lateral, you know, issues and contamination.
Is the use and occupancy permit strictly limited to the condition of a labidal? Or is it more broader than that?
There are, it is more broad than that. George could probably speak. Please.
There's four items on it. The sewer lateral, concrete condition sidewalk incur as one, a four-inch reflective number announced, which is a big issue. And the other is smoke detectors.
Okay.
Now, this ordinance, the death of the smoke detectors, as our neighboring municipalities do and that we don't go inside the house, but they have a memorized statement of the location, required locations, and they sign off saying that right here in this place, memorize it. And then that goes in the property file.
So there's no inside-house inspection as part of any of this?
That is correct.
Okay.
All right. So there's a motion on the floor and a second. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much. In Mr. Connor's absence, is there anyone who would like to move ahead with this paving motion?
Paving estimates for joint roads with Abington Township. Make a motion to approve the paving estimates for joint roads agreement with Abington Township. Disagreement would include the pavement on idle road from York Road to New Bond Road and Washington Avenue from York Road to Greenwood Avenue. The estimate to nil-pave, replace all pavement markings and traffic loops is approximately forty thousand dollars.
Great. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on this one? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. And so, moving on.
Twenty seventeen paving project, permission to advertise and make a motion to advertise, authorize the advertisement of the twenty seventeen paving program.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And one more for revising Chapter one fifty-six.
This is hard work.
Yeah.
Permission to review and revise Chapter one fifty-six of Borough Code. Make a motion to authorize the review and revision of Chapter one fifty-six of Janketown Borough Code.
Okay. And, so you hear a second?
Second.
And can you just remind us, Manager Locke, what this chapter is about?
This chapter is about street and sidewalk. It was written in the seventies. It's a little archaic. It uses a lot of terms that aren't in place anymore. And it's very hard to enforce in a letter of the law. There's some things that are still existing. It's a bit of a... It is a lot of work.
All right. Thank you very much. Yes?
Just to clarify, any revisions that are deemed to be needed in the code are all separate ordinances or separate votes or have to be in the ordinance? Or is it all covered under this?
For the streets and sidewalks?
For the revisions they can make to Chapter one fifty-six.
If I may, this is just authorizing the legal work to...
Right.
...revis it. And then what will happen is they'll bring in new replacement ordinance from all locations.
And then that's...
And then that will be...
That's what I thought. I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah. So we're not revising the whole Borough Code, just certain sections?
Just certain sections.
Yeah.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much. And finally, Council Carol.
And the last item is regarding the school district request to waive the UCC review and inspection costs. And I make a motion to reduce the school district's building permit fees to the borough's actual cost on the current proposed classroom expansion project.
Do I hear a second? Okay. And Manager Locke, would you just comment on what that means in terms of reduction?
So, Madam President, I wrote a memo that's in your Dropbox on this. The school district had requested a waiver of the inspection fees and plan review fees that are required by the state. Their project is going to cost four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars and it's gonna take eight weeks to be done. The permit application fees are based off the cost of the job. On some jobs like this, they may save money by going with actual cost. The UCC permit fees are set to be fair and over the course of the fiscal year, it should be revenue neutral. So you might issue a permit for a hundred dollars, it actually costs four hundred dollars. And when you get a big job that comes like this, you know, you might make that one back. It comes out of wash at the end of the year. So what I recommend was reducing it to actual cost. And I believe that the superintendent was happy with that. We're gonna talk to her tomorrow, so we'll bring this to her if it's approved. Whatever limit it to, and I was really taking a shot in the dark with this on what it would cost them. It's an estimate, thirty-six hundred dollars is probably what it's gonna cost them. I mean, it really is a shot in the dark. It's five hours a week inspecting for eight weeks. We already spent six hours reviewing the plan so they could put it up and bid. So that was four hundred and seventy-four dollars. So like I said, the total that they'll probably end up spending is close to thirty-seven hundred dollars, thirty-six seventy-nine. So it'd be a savings of sixty-eight hundred and seventy-five dollars to the school district if an estimation comes up.
Great.
It'll definitely be a savings of...
Thank you for doing that. Okay. We have a motion on the floor and a second. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. With the record showing... Under new business? Yes.
I approve new business.
Okay.
I'd like to open, we have to public comment again to discuss our advertising for the selection of a new tax collector or a new tax auditor.
Okay. So first we will open up the meeting to public comment again. And I don't think we need a second, actually.
No. You're just allowing the opportunity. See if there's an, if anyone's interested, then a motion is...
Okay. And so by, by advertising for a new tax collector, you're not speaking of the elected position?
No, no. This is Burkhire that we use now. And we've been disappointed, not so much in their actual collection, but in the quality of the data that they share with us about tax lots, their ability to cross-reference the various bills, the sewer bills and the property tax bills to the owners, their ability to help us find businesses in the borough that aren't paying us, and the number of errors that have come up. We're businesses that were not actually in the borough, were paying us. And so we ended up having to write six-figure checks to pay them back. So we've been disappointed. So this is to look to see if perhaps there's a good replacement of that. And then also the audit that can be done of the various taxes that we collect, especially the business privileged taxes. We're looking for a new auditor to make sure, again, to find businesses that are in the borough that we don't know about and make sure they do pay their taxes for, with the data correct.
Any questions or comments about this?
I think it's important and probably it's overdue, at least we opened up a conversation about how we can get a higher, an improved service, polished service. So I'm in all favor of it.
I, I am as well. And your comment that it's overdue was, my question was, when was the last time we did this, this audit?
Before I was on Council, not that I...
I mean, they have a lot, they have a lot of accounts. So we're certainly not in the memory of that.
No. Burkhire does it for an awful lot of reason. Just very straightforward things like associating a particular property tax bill with the parcel identified information in the county database. Seems so mandatory for doing this and necessary for staff to be able to track down. Someone should be paying us or if they, and we're not, or vice versa. We just, we can't pay.
All right. So you want to put forward a motion?
I do. If there's any...
Any other public comments about the question?
It's not that I move that we advertise the, so Request for Possessions for the Tax Collection and Tax Audit.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Very good. We will, I move that we enter into executive session, a brief executive session to, for the discussion of your...